I don't think so.
No, he's busy with it.
Okay.
Please sit up for sure.
Is everyone live?
You do.
It would definitely.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
Here.
Why not?
Sure.
One short time just here about a third day.
That's okay.
Is that a manual focus on that or?
It's just suited all the way. Any other?
In order, by now there's no. And and that's the agenda. Here, here. Mister.
Like to.
Good morning, everybody. Yeah, we're the sort of the new old auditors. I think we had a quick introduction by phone in February. So, yeah, our camera's office. We've been working together over the last, well, I've worked with them for like twenty plus years, but to their capacity for municipalities through our busy season was a little pinch this year, so they called us up and asked us to help out and we we do a few, so we sort of reallocated the jobs and that and took it on, but still the same KPMG office doing it and work with them on the transition. So I'm going to go through and I'll throw up first is our audit findings report. This document talks about the highlights of the audit process, which I know is just fascinating for ready on a Tuesday morning, so I'll just try and hit the highlights of. Do you see it all right or you need to?
Give me a second.
Sure.
Sure.
Yeah, so we changed our office. And but I hopefully it was pretty clean process. I've been big thanks to James for for getting through it. We were just briefly talking before I started. You know, the core part of the audit and everything is pretty routine, but this year there was a new standard that we had to deal with and bring in, which introduced this new liability onto your balance sheet for asset retirement obligations. It was basically clean above asbestos and things like that, so this is a new standard. It's been sort of lurking for a few years, but this is the year that we had to put into effect, so there's a whole bunch of accounting technicalities and estimates and things we had to go through on that process, so that was that was sort of the the cause of the headache this year. I'd say all the other stuff, James' information is great and easy to audit. And, you know, we just had to work together to get through this new standard and get that and deal with, as I say, the mechanics on those and get them into the books. So that's sort of the highlights. You can see this is the rest of the team, Craig and Brad. I think Brad was on speed dial with James, particularly over the last two weeks, getting it brought to conclusion here, so credit to those guys and to James as well. So, yeah, so we're here today hopefully getting the statements approved and then we'll get everything finalized and so you can submit financials into the system. In terms of highlights, things, sort of key areas is tangible capital assets, as you'll know, you have big, big spend and big infrastructure with with town Princeton, so a lot of a lot of expenditures going in that direction and reinvestment in infrastructure, so we definitely focus on that, reserve contributions, just general expenses, payroll, and obviously the grants that came into fund a bunch of those tangible capital asset expenditures over the last couple of years and the complexities around those grants and the timing of when you bring those into revenue. At that, as I talked about asset retirement obligations, this is a new standard and these standards around financial instruments, which didn't really have much impact, so. So no big changes to our plan, no major uncorrected items. We just had some items that got corrected in the statement, so the only thing really new, as I mentioned, is on this new asset retirement standard. No control deficiencies, no, no major concerns in that regard, so. When we do an audit, we have this thing called materiality and it just is a sort of a number buffer. Basically is, you know, if there's a timing difference, if things aren't exactly down to the penny in one year versus another, no one's really going to care because it's not really going to change your mind on anything, so it kind of has a little bit of a number buffer to allow just sort of timing differences and things that may not be perfectly counting standards to slide through that really don't matter. If we audited things and made things down to the penny, we'd be still doing this for quite a while, more than four months after year end. So we determine that based on revenues. It's about 2.2% of revenues, so four to 10,000. We don't want to sort of push up to the upper boundaries of that. We really only care about things over $21,000. I mean, if you find things that are, you know, a little smelly or something like that, we're going to be more worried about it versus again, just like accounting issues on a sort of how you're recognizing a grant or grant revenue or something like that, so. Anyways, that's materiality. This is a standard slide. We're obligated to look at management override. Don't have any concerns, but we have to look at it to do our professional standards, so we do a bunch of testing to make sure that, you know, nothing's really sort of cooking the books, that kind of thing, or overriding estimates, or there's sort of bias in there, but no concerns around any of that. Tangible capital assets, so this is the highlights of what we do. We looked at all the additions and how things get amortized, so the only thing we saw around all of this was amortization of roads was miscalculated, so that got fixed. And then reserve transactions. Yes, we looked around all our reserve contributions, distributions and no issues were noted there. Expenses, yeah, so the only thing on the expenses side back to annual capital assets, it was just a sort of subsequent events testing that didn't get posted in the right period, so that got fixed. Grant revenue, there was a court there with one grant where you got a $750,000 grant, but you had to spend a million to get the 750, so I think, and essentially what was getting recognized was just up to the first 750, so you get a bit of a 25% contribution or that had impacted the timing when that grant came in, so that that got completed in 2024.
It was the Eck Dev grant for the Plaza and for the Camp, so as soon as we completed it, it was fine. The money was already allocated. It was just misallocated. The the General Ledger wrote to the accountants.
Yeah, I think when you complete that project in the 2024, you got fully topped up on that grant, so yeah, just a timing issue around that one. So that was the excitement around that. Asset retirement obligations, so again, this is really around asbestos, site cleanup, oil tanks, that kind of stuff, so generally it's asbestos for old buildings when construction contained a lot of asbestos and you'll, on the cleanup side of things, it's expensive to dispose, so you have to factor that in and figure out how much it's going to cost and when are you going to spend it and make an estimate for that and put it on your books and sort of build it up with some inflation and discount it back through the time value of money or the discount rate, so again, a bit of a technical exercise to get that all done, so. And yet we had to go back where there's like, there's a choice for hell that got rolled onto your books because it's a new standard. So you went back and actually restated 2022 or the beginning of 2022 as one of the options. Set it up and then rolled it forward into 2023, so all those mechanics all got flowed through the statements, which I'll review when we get into the statements, but effectively you set up a big liability on your balance sheet and as time goes by, you'll sort of work close towards that actual cleanup and continue to refine those estimates as the sort of speeds up or slows down on that timing and that those numbers will roll through your book as long as the actual expenditures of them, so. But I think at the immediate time being, it's just a number and there's no sort of immediate plans for for teardown, but maybe James, you can correct me if I'm wrong here in terms of site demolition and I think it's more future items.
So we were required to make a number of assumptions for for asset retirement obligations. Number of the buildings that Town of Princeton owns are north of 50 years old and they've been fully amortized and those are relatively straightforward. We estimated they're continued use at 25 years and then and then for their calculations. The buildings that were not fully amortized, which we only had, we only managed to get six out of 23. The arena is almost fully amortized. It's almost 50 years old, but for any building that was less than 50 years old, we recalculated all the amortization for this for this new standard. Backed it to time it to 2022, 40. Quite the exercise, quite the quite the intensive calculations on this one, so. Yeah, it we did estimate we would be keeping all buildings with the exception of the Mason Hall because that's that's due to be demolished shortly. We timed everything else for 25 years out.
Yeah, so again, it's a bit of an accounting exercise for the time being and then you'll start actually spending real dollars, let's say, starting with the hall there.
The only other exception was landfill. As per the consultant should remain active until 2110.
This process is a one-time thing.
Well, you have to maintain it every year, but the heavy lifting is all done in the last month or two, so it's all kind of set up now and then I think then you can focus more on the cash. I mean, there's still be some mechanics for as time goes on, you get closer to turning things down, you sort of have to.
Yeah, to give to give some perspective, after the after the senior accountant was here, probably took us about three days to do all the corrections with the road amortization and and the calculations for that. This ARO finished last night at about 3:00. It took probably five weeks to get all the numbers balanced and get all the estimates in and process everything. It's been a fairly monumental task. But the the heavy lifting. Year to year, it's going to be, we'll probably have probably a rest once every five to seven years. Just make sure we're not missing anything. If there's any major construction inflation, we'll update that to account. Discount rates always change based on bond rates and how the economy is doing and such, inflation, things like that, but from here to here, this process.
And then we sort of joked that it isn't accounting exercise, but you know, when you do go tear something down, there is an extra cost for the say the asbestos cleanup, so it'll become real as you as things sort of age out and get replaced, so. I think it's good to just get it on the horizon so you can budget for these things. So that was the the excitement around the asset retirement obligations, financial instruments, which is what you much to do about nothing. It's just sort of a bunch of technical accounting issues about how you record your financial instruments like market instruments, derivatives, that kind of stuff, so and know what impact happened with that to the standard. So to get into the correction, so these journal entries here really just speak to setting about, setting up the amount, starting in the opening of 2022, rolling it through the 22 period, so it impacts, you know, surplus, amortization and setting up assets, setting up this liability. And then you roll into 2023 and then there's an impact as a year marches on and you amortize the asset value down and you sort of have this liability that's getting closer, so but the time value of money, as I said, is discounted, so as time goes by, that starts to grow towards real dollars, so.
And it's important to note that it says misstatements. Usually a misstatement is generated when I screw up something royally and 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 then it goes under this report, something more than 21,000. This misstatement is caused based on the fact that I didn't implement the standard in the past, so it's a change in the standard. It's not necessarily something that we misstate.
Yeah, that's a valid. That's a that's a valid point, yeah, and and because I think we were working together to to work through the standard, you know, like it's not like you work, you work for the consultant and kind of got the parameters around it and then we got into the weeds on it and figured out the technical journal entries, exactly what numbers had to go where, so I think just working collaboratively in that process. Shows up on the schedule versus it wasn't booked sort of the day one when they showed up. But next year should be all under control. So then this goes back to the tangible capital asset purchase, so really it's the setup of the asset and payable, so no income impact, impact really. And then you, well, other than the fact that it was fully funded, so you set up the receivable and the and the grant revenue related to it, so that brought that grant revenue into the books for the year. We talked about the roads getting fixed up, so I think it was basically just being oversome, it is being overamortized into a negative value, so it's just a spreadsheet.
The point to know that I did get the amortization schedule for KPMG.
Yeah. We'll throw those, we'll throw the other guys under the bus, so, yeah. So then there was a just, you get another one, didn't impact 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 income, just reclassification on your balance sheet between receivable and deferred revenue. And then that last one was that one with the 750,000 grand revenue and the having to contribute a million to get 750,000 back, so it just impacted the timing on the getting the rest of that grant revenue in. So that was that, as I say, no controlled efficiencies, no issues around estimates or presentation, so everything was good there. What I'll do is maybe just flip to the financial statements. I mean, these things are four months old, so I'm sure you're well aware of the meat of the of the numbers. So your report, our reports, it's important, that's what you pay for. And so, you know, you know, and financial statements for municipality are kind of quirky in terms of the presentation. They're not like, not like a balance sheet they're referred to because you don't have like assets equalling liabilities and equity. You have this presentation where you have your financial assets, less your financial liabilities, you have net financial assets. Then layer on the non-financial assets at the bottom and get your surplus, so slightly different presentation than a normal balance sheet, but focusing on, you know, your financial assets and liabilities, you know, things on the asset side are fairly consistent year over year in terms of cash, but quite a big increase in these accounts receivable as you're waiting for these grants funds to come in, so. So you have a healthy, healthy surplus, but cash wise, you're still waiting on almost $10 million of that to roll in the door, so James, you were saying that it's a bit of a process to extract those funds out of the.
Yeah, we're still waiting for approximately $4 million from from emergency funds from the flood. The EMBC, now EMCR has had difficulty amongst, you know, us and Merritt and absolutely chill. It's been well dogged news and they're just having difficulty processing these things. We are waiting for the arena grant to come through still. There's bureaucratic hangups on the federal government level. The the still waiting for some grant funding from EVM, from FCM, that's just for regional projects, so they give us the money upfront. We only get the 50% at the end, but we actually complete the work, so. There's some of them are just tiny issues and some of them are legitimate. Some of them are very long tooth. We're still dealing with insurance. Some on some of the evaluations of buildings, so that is also worth the 10 million, so. Yeah, it's a it's a big number. I'm not concerned about it outside from revenue sources. It's been vetted through the auditing process and they're satisfied with the with its collectability, but but it is a large number, so it'll be one of my my focuses moving forward.
Yeah, and then you know, the consistency on land held for resale, about 1.7 million, just a little bit of long-term investments, then so you got your again, your total financial assets of just about $31 million. Then getting into the financial liability side again, payables pretty consistent year over year as things turn over and things have to get paid for, deferred revenue again, fairly consistent, a bit of an increase, 600,000 there. Again, timing it when you get dollars, dollars and funds and when you spend them and how they get brought into revenue. And that's quite a large number, given all the grants you've had in the last couple of years. Don't really know what a normal run rate would be for Town of Princeton, maybe.
The deferred revenue is large. That just goes to the fact that we have a lot of projects that have already been funded, specifically the flood, flood mitigation, the the well one project, the well four project that we started to zoom. The all the all the sort of flood asset after that is large. The growing communities fund is in the revenue, so that's $2 million that we hear from Fire Hall. So so just a project that are to be done, we just have to fascinations. We can't do everything immediately, some things right here.
You don't really want the damage, but sort of a good problem is that you have the cash and just got these projects stacked up and ready to go, so. And then again, debt, pretty consistent, just a little bit of pay down year over year, and then there we see that asset retirement obligation of 1.9 million dollars, which is the estimate for cleanup of all these buildings and landfill. As mentioned, the landfill is way out in the future, but sort of like if you had to clean it up today, how much would it cost? And there's a number on the on that on the balance sheet related to that. So again, your net financial assets going up from like 6.8 to 9.1 million, just sort of showing the sort of extra cash around in the in the projects to be spent, so. Again, a lot of that is tied up in receivable, so it's not in your bank account at this point, but to be collected. And then so you get into the three categories of non-financial assets. You can see just general supplies, pretty consistent year over year, same as prepaid. And you'd expect those to be consistent year over year and they are. And then you get into your tangible capital assets, which is 75% of your surplus balance really, so you got 33 million there and you can see that reinvestment of the year, I believe it was 8 million or so, reinvested projects that actually happened and assets were purchased, less than you amortize a little bit of that each year as you use it, so. So that's the statement of financial position.
Your new construction is over nine, so amortization dropped to 48, but yeah, 9 million, considering that when I started this municipality, that was struggling to push one. So if you need obvious evidence of the municipality investing in in the roads or water or sewers or buildings, that's that's everywhere. You know, we we spent almost half of our fiscal capacity this year on capital assets, so I think that's important.
I think there's a saying, don't let a good crisis go to waste, so I don't want to have this flood, but I think you guys have done well for for grants and rebuilding that infrastructure, so. So getting into your statement of operations, so sort of the normal income statement. So you can see this total revenue in all the different categories, so big picture. 14.9 million last year and up to almost 19.2, so taxation revenue, so I think that story is really the win around the found taxation revenue, it's sort of a bit of a one-time bump with an ongoing contribution that's going to occur there, so you've probably already been through that one.
That was the BC Hydro, so the, yeah, the under under the local government act, all utilities that operate within town boundaries, they're supposed to pay 1% of their net revenue to the municipality annually. Fortis does, Talis does, Eslink does for cable vision. But the one thing we noticed is that Hydra was not, and BC Hydro provides electricity for copper mine, which is the general. So which is within the town boundaries and as soon as we had persuaded the hours to be that it was, they were sending that payment to the surveyor of taxes in Victoria in lieu for the regional list. So they still consider the mine within the regional list of values. So as soon as we persuaded them, that was incorrect. That money was that forward to the municipality for the last eight fiscal years in the amount of approximately 2.2 million dollars. Annually moving forward, that amount will get moved to about 400,000. So it's a very significant number and I'm glad we got a good resolution for that, so.
You probably set the expectation you can find 400 grand every year, but see how you do on that one, but yeah, that was a nice win. And so then to get it down into the rest of the category, so user fees again, pretty consistent. Grand funds are up almost 1.8. I think you mentioned the growing communities. There were some new funds flowing around the province, so that money came into Princeton there. Other excitement, I think investment income up $700,000, so just more cash lying around and interest rates are actually more meaningful now, so you have some investment income. The land sales, you can see in 2022, as significant land sales have only down to 65,000 this year. Then everything else sort of nets out to just almost similar to to prior year. So the significance really in any of those categories. On the expense side, so the big changes around that, I mean, in total, they're down 600,000, so there's a 1.9 million reduction in protective services offset by 321 increase in recreation, cultural services and 890,000 increase in transportation. The other one is sort of net additions of about $100,000, so again, some wins and some shifting of categories around there, but overall down 624. And then below the line there, you see that proceed from insurance claim, so there's a little bit of money came in 2022 and 2.1 million coming in 2023, so that also boosted the bottom line. And then that other income is a community force, which is essentially break even for the year. So that's that one, and then you get down to the annual surplus in total of about $10 million versus four last year. So you tack that on to the 32 million you had at the start of the year and you get to this 42.671 surplus. Which again, a bu- a bunch of that is really invested in your infrastructure, say three quarters of that was invested in infrastructure, and I think the bunch of the rest of the financial surplus is going to go into infrastructure in the near future. You're sorry to see this change in surplus for the year and change in net financial assets, which funny schedule, I think the more relevant thing is really just what happened cash wise, so you have these four categories of cash, operating, capital, investing and financing. So we take the annual surplus, which is the accounting income, and then sort of add back the non-cash items, like primarily amortization is the big one, but we have this secretion that I mentioned on asset retirement obligation, which is you have a liability and you're marching towards it, so you have to sort of get towards those real dollars and creep up to that number. Bit of an accounting thing, and then the next bucket of items in there is your balance sheet changes, so your accounts receivable sort of increased by $5 million, so a bit of a burden on cash there, so. And the other categories were roughly the same, offset a little bit by that deferred revenue as that net increase coming in there, so. At the end of the day, operationally, it's saying that 7.1 million dollars came in the door for operating. And then you spend this 8.9 million dollars on capital assets. You got some money back from the community forest, 265, and then you paid down your debt for 190, so. Again, if you sort of focus on those big categories, $7 million coming in from operations, 8.90 for assets, some money back for Forest Corp. Some money back for forest corp and then paying down some debt. So, uh, at the end of the day. 1.7 million dollar decrease in cash. So started the year with 20.6, ended with 18.9. So that's the sort of the cash reality of things that happen through your financial statements. The rest of the statements are all pretty consistent prior year. You get into the exciting, uh, policy notes that we have to include in there. So there's, uh, nothing really of significance in there. Um. You know, talk about tax collective for other agencies, but then you get into this one asset retirement obligation. So I know tonight, after the hockey game, when you're bored, you might want to go through and read through this, uh, accounting policy note. Put yourself to sleep as to what sort of goes on with this account and why it's set up and what was done there. So. Uh, those are the nitty gritties around all of that. Uh, then you get to the rest of the statements that we talked about adoption of the standard. But then you get into the sort of the distant details on your financial statements on the key items of cash. Breakdown what's on deposit, what's in money market funds, what's in the debt reserve fund of the, in this finance authority. And so pretty consistent as you sort of place excess cash in money market funds. Um, and you get into the accounts receivable, what sort of taxes consistent in this big bumper grants that you got 9.4 million dollars as of December that you're waiting to collect on. Uh, and then in your investments, again, we got the subsidiary, uh, for the community forest, sorry, 33% owned. So basically there's not much equity in that. Um, you can see the one-third interest is about two grand. So not, nothing is significant. That basically ran at a break even for the year. Uh, accounts payable, this is really just required disclosure for sort of what's in there for wages payable. Uh, and government remittances, again, those are just required disclosures. And you get into this deferred revenue number and the breakdown of it. So, um, again, what's, what's been unspent? So you got 10.7 in total with the bulk of it being flood grants. And then a few other, uh, smaller items like, uh, sitting in there. Tangible capital assets, just the details and all the breakdowns for cost additions by category amortization. You know, estimated useful life and how you're writing it off over time. So again, just to break down all those numbers, which really that's the net 33.2 million on the bottom right that goes to your balance sheet in total. And then this is the number for the prior year. Uh, a bit of a breakdown on assets under construction, which have been amortized. You got $6 million, uh, still under construction. Waiting to be put into service at December 31. There's nothing contributed, uh, for the year. Then you get the breakdown of your surplus. Um, so as mentioned, a bulk of that is sitting in your tangible capital assets. And you have a bunch of reserves set aside. This is just going through these reserves that you've set up. But the more significant ones really being that, uh, future amenity line, water and sewer project and that growing communities. And so the big ticket items within that 16.7 of reserves. Uh, and all the other sort of smaller pieces within that. Taxation, what's happening in taxation. So what you've collected again. You see that, that first line item with that B C hydro win really in the, the rest of it's fairly consistent year over year. Uh, required disclosure on contingencies, not much there. Pension liability again, just standard disclosure and the municipal pension plan gets remeasured every few years. Uh, and that what you pay into that plan and then the fact that the plan's being revalued, but generally they're well funded. So. Looking with that stays the same. Uh, we're part of the disclosed budget. So that's in there. And then you get into all the segmented information of all the different services that you provide. And the breakdown of revenue, uh, expenses within all those different segments and services. So. Again, fairly consistent allocations, uh, over prior years. I don't know if you have any comments on that, James, on these specific buckets or?
It's important to note that this is prepared here, um, to satisfy the requirements of the province of Columbia. It's not necessarily, um, the breakdown that we would use to measure whether a department is profitable or not. Uh, whether it's, uh, whether it's deficient or surplus. Um, we use different measures. So, so. Um, take, take the bottom line, annual surplus, number of salt. Uh, it's great for repair and purposes for the province does, but it's kind of lousy for, um, you know, I'm, I'm going to, uh, to, uh, lose it on Jim David. Because it's a deficiency of $80,000 in transportation. So almost every municipal government has a condition. That tells the province, yes, we need more. So, so that's, that's the kind of use they get out of this report. Not necessarily for us, uh, pointing fingers at municipal.
Good point. Uh, and then prior year numbers for that as well. So then you get into this asset retirement obligation and sort of. This, no, really talks through like certain key balance sheet items that where they were. Um, you had a liability set up for the solid waste landfill closure. So that just disappeared and it got bundled in with the asset retirement obligation. So you can see it really was 900,004 and under the new standard, it's 1.8, uh, going into 2022. And then there's a bit of a bump to your, uh, to your assets or surplus. Uh, yeah. So just sort of the numbers that follow to that. But I think the big important one in there again is going from your old landfill liability and the old standard of 900 up to 1.8. Really to include that, the asbestos cleanup effectively, and then the new mechanics and the math around everything under the new standard, which would impact that as well. And then for last year's service, again, you can see sort of how things got impacted, whopping 163 dollar adjustment to recreation and cultural services.
Because the arena is almost.
Yeah. So a small change there, more of an impact, uh, more small impact on utility. Uh, and again, so you can see the changes there on the, on the statement of operations for how things change. So. Bottom line, 325 change on your, uh, annual surplus there for, this is for 2022. So. This is just rolling the standard back, as mentioned, under the option to do this retrospective adjustment. So that's the asset retirement obligation debt. So no changes in the pieces of debt, uh, still four and you just really just pay them down. Um, so you have these floating rates and where they're at as of December, which are starting to creep up a little bit, uh, on a couple of them. Uh, so again, I don't think there's any surprise there as you pay the MFA financing down. And you can see there on the, the bottom ones are going to be, you know, gone by 2027. The other ones are 2032, the more significant pieces. So. Sorry.
So the top two are water and sewer plants. The bottom two are, are, are vehicle ones that we have, uh, are, are just, uh, neutral.
Yes, right. Yeah. The interest reset in 2032 and then another 20 years after that. Uh, and then it just shows the schedule of, you know, what you're paying out each year. So roughly 200,000 a year with some payout extra then in 2027. And when that gets paid out there, annual payment goes down a little bit. So. Uh, and then just the, uh, the flood, as you know about what's going on there with the grant revenue and things flowing in for that, some more details. Nothing really groundbreaking within that. These standard related party transactions. So what you provide for the forest corp of 24,000 for administrative services. And then they owe you roughly $25,000 that's sitting in accounts receivable. Uh, and then we get into, uh, growing communities fund and what happened. So there was a balance at the beginning of the year, really just accrued some interest. And then you had some eligible costs. So you're starting to dig into those funds. So. Again, James, I don't know if you have any comments on that in terms of spend.
Yeah. Growing communities funds, you're, you're required to schedule for it within the financial savings. Um, the 1.96 came in last year. That was the amount we received. Um, there was a couple of very small, um, project costs around, um, some designs and some signage for the fire hall, mostly for the ministry. And the interest occurred, like I said, we did very good, just the interest in the bank account this year. So it actually occurred where we spent that bit. So. Um, still working on our, uh, some financing options for the fire hall and hopefully it needs us up. It has to be used up. I believe by 2027, 2028. So, um, yeah, we're, uh, still designing, trying to figure out how to balance. So.
And it's like you noted, this sort of a required disclosure, they want to track this, I guess, specifically on the spending versus some of the other grants that are just sort of lumped in there with deferred revenue. Yeah. So again, I think, yeah, again, for me, the highlights, again, again, thanks to James once again for getting through the process and particularly with that new standard. It was a bit of mental gymnastics and the exciting accounting debate about interest rates and inflation and things like that. But we're just basically wanting to make sure that it was in line with the standards and the math all worked. So we, uh, we came to a mutual agreement and we're happy with the estimates for costs and everything. So we're satisfied that that got all set up properly. And then, you know, more importantly, that you had these grants come in, you got a nice surplus, you're spending it all on your potential capital asset reinvestment as you should. So no real surprises. And I think like James said, the core operations are pretty consistent year over year and. Sort of again, the main part of the audit takes three, four days and then the cleanup took a bit more. So now that we're through this, it should be much simpler, shorter process, uh, next year. So. So that's, uh, that's the highlights of, of the audit. So.
Setting insider for the landfill. Is there anything in there for the ground bridge? That's something that we're considering in the future.
That, that will be part of the budgeting process for the, uh, for, uh, for the capital. So not, not, not these things.
Quite way back, I'm comfortable, three, three money, money. I presume it was coming from the province, federal money coming from the province.
Yeah. So that's, uh, some, some of the, um, the accounts receivable included a, uh, quite a bit of, uh, grant pay. For, uh, different projects that we're doing around town. One of them is, uh, the, uh, the plaza and the campground. So, um, because we were almost complete, um, I included, uh, I, I included right up until the max maximum, um, for the grant funding. The editor wanted us to put it at 75. So that was the correction for this year. Uh, we've exhausted the grant already. Uh, we're in the process of spending it. So that should be coming through with the next month or two. I think we have a drop dead deadline to put it all before by June first.
This part been coming, been coming.
Yeah.
So, uh, we, we, we have interest for that. Now would you like to give us to this?
Um, well, it does, it does, it does actually capitalize, um, and then expended again because of the, um, um. Just the way it's set up, um, the, this is money owed you. So it does accrue interest that way. But, uh, but then again, it's expended as a, as a project cost. So there's interest fees now that we have a significant amount of money that's owed to us.
Last, last, um, where you, you, number of, number of, how are we, how are we ready to turn this around? Well, being embarrassed for the.
Well, that's a bit of a tricky one. I think, and you guys, I mean, compare size, yes, but I think with the whole flood situation and the grant, you guys like have this sort of a strange blip going through your system. Over the three, four, five year period here as you're getting all those funds and spending more than normal. So. I think it probably level out sort of in a couple of years to a more routine. You know, deferred revenue, grant money coming in and capital app, capital asset expenditures. So. I'd say right now, like again, there's a lot, there's lots of money sitting there and projects in the books to be completed. Let's say there's a bit of a choke point in terms of getting things done. But. But I'd say right now, you know, you guys have substantial funds to, you have things that you have to reinvest in. So. So getting back to a more normal cycle in the next few years, interesting to see.
Situation is.
Yeah. Yeah. Municipality goes through a cycle of when they got to rebuild the arena or a swimming pool or whatever it may be. And you run it out for 30 years and then they gotta get some financing and redo it again, like in Burnin' Hour. About to get a bunch of money for a new active living center. But you know, that, that old arena. Served its purpose for a long time and you build new hockey rink now to be cool. So. Again, it really just depends on where you're on your life cycle of your big expenditures like that. So. I'd say that debt load isn't too extreme. So, um. And I, I looked at the numbers and I don't, and you said it just now, James, in terms of what the bigger pieces of debt are related to financing of. For the MFA debt. Where was that? Here we go. We got near 5.5. And then when the water system, sewer and water system, so again, again. That goes back to when you sort of put those, uh, upgrades in. So. Uh, in terms of other community assets, there's not a lot of debt on that stuff. You talked about the hockey rink. I think within that asset retirement obligation, I don't know much life you got left in that. It's almost fully amortized. We're probably going to use it for another, hopefully, 10 plus years.
25.
Yeah. Yeah. So again, I think there's a bunch of the assets that are somewhat fully paid for. So, and, you know, but again, 10, 20, 30 years, start planning out for replacement of this stuff. And making sure you have reserves set aside and, you know, hydro funding is going to help maybe. Keep paying for services and hopefully building up some reserves for replacement and the longer term projects down the road. But. Yeah. So I guess that's your question. You got a bunch of money floating around for current infrastructure, longer term community assets. The financing doesn't seem too heavy. So.
Thank you.
Be sure your taxpayers are all happy with what they're paying and the value they're getting.
Anybody else have any questions? Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, uh, now that the financial statements have been presented to council, uh, they need to be, uh, uh, averted, received by, uh, by council. The province, 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 finding, finding.
6.22. 6.22, the city center. Yes, uh, thank you. This is for the sewer site under the Tulabine River that was affected by the 2021 flood event. And, um, it's now exposed and I presented two options either. Place the site and it doesn't really work due to the elevations or lift stations. So council approved. The application for a grant for the construction of a lift station after received approval for the upper two hundred and boundaries. And it went up for tender. Uh, one company bid on it and that is reconstruction. And I'm asking that, uh, we award this to reconstruction.
Any, any questions?
So I'm, I'm just going to confirm that we got the right thing.
In process right now. There's a. The schools is really has, has approved, uh, at their board level, um, second registers.
And then when is this, when is pretty, pretty, you can start?
Um, uncertain at this point. Yeah, it's, this needs to be done. So this project is going to be high priority. So, yeah.
Other questions? Just, just questions. All favor.
Uh, situation was in a contract. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I'll speak on this. This is a point in fact background, but if you thought some area of this on, on, it's a conference. Uh, it's a program, it's really collaborative, public safety program. One of the programs under that is called Situation Table. And I'm just gonna read that. Clear, clear, uh, Situation Tables, how frontline staff, public safety, how services that are trusted to identify vulnerable people. And probably connect them, services before they experience a negative and traumatic. So something that I think is gonna be very useful to our community. Town staff picked up on it, applied for, or received a grant to set up a local Situation Table. Uh, this is a fully funded grant to set up this, this, this program. Uh, the program ends that we engage network, global level network, to provide the training to, uh, to participants. Uh, so it's a single source of what they, they approve. And so the recommendation is to award the contract to, to global network.
Thank you. Yeah, Senator, Senator, Jager, he also needs to take them. Talk, talk, bring, bring, when it starts doing, and then first, this. On the back, back, and then the, the, forward, again. Oh, no, it survives background. Services on an individual basis for. I use this individual stuff, so.
Has there been a, um, like, how, how work has that been generally?
Yeah, we don't, we don't have to believe.
Will it be able to gauge maybe now?
No, so it's, so, so somebody brings somebody forward. Joe, so that's the Situation Table. How, how, get, get. Just, just.
Thank you. So we've got, New Mexico, two, two development permit, uh, applications for new, uh, business park, development permit area. So this is the first one. This is for, um, the development of Kettle Valley Storage's third lot in their storage facility. Um, this is kind of their, their beginning of developing that, that final lot. Uh, it's a construction of a hundred forty square meter steel building. Smaller, smaller start to their project up there, but, uh, flat site, large, large lot. Uh, six thousand seven hundred square meter site. Uh, the building's gonna be sited right, uh, six meters from the front property line. So utilizing the front flat space. Uh, they do have existing RV and, and container storage. That moving, uh, there's kind of a natural bench on the property and the outdoor storage, kind of the rear of the property. Uh, looking at the, the development permit area guidelines, uh, citing, uh, you know, easy access by, by any transportation type. Um, the, the front three meter landscape area will be maintained on David Brown Way. Uh, and of course, large, large site and, and a small building to, to start with. So not much density being added to the, to the area. Uh, the design, uh, they are using aggregated metal, uh, structure. The, the DPA does, uh, suede from larger, uh, metal. Unarticulated structures. Um, I don't think this is a huge building and, and close to the landscape area. I don't think it'd be a, uh, dark gray color with a, or a tone trim. Uh, the landscape, uh, they are providing landscaping along the, the David Brown Way, uh, entrance to the property. And, uh, again, small piece by market spots that they need to, to have included there as well. So. This is also within our wildfire protection development area. Uh, that permit is, uh, a technical permit that can be delegated to staff. So, uh, with this form of character, they'll have that second DPA though.
I would just say that, they've done a good job of our, our keeping in the business park and medical park. Uniformities, did you notice anything?
Any final questions?
I'll say, I'll say.
Was, was, any other question I can ask? Oh, the question. Scary, scary dude. X Y X Y is the development permit through nineteen ninety four.
Thank you again, another, uh, business park, uh, development permit application. This one is for, uh, New Bed Clinic, um, on Lori Creek Way. Again, a large lot, uh, sixty three hundred square meters. This, uh, is a really nice looking development. The, the, looking at the design and, uh, design for the, uh, the building. This one is a little more, um, in depth with some, some more architectural features and, and peaks and ridges. Uh, design is primarily a black building with, with their own accents. Landscaping, uh, they've got, uh, two frontages to, to consider, Lori Creek Way and, and the Prince of Summerland Road. Um, they've done a nice job of, of providing landscaping, uh, on both, uh, both three meter frontages. As well as having a, a nice, uh, growth mature, uh, uh, trees as well on the, the one side of the property. Uh, park, parking, they provide significant parking, uh, probably more than they, they even necessarily need to. Uh, they provided bike parking off both, of the front of the building and, and they met the, the signage requirements as well. Uh, this one as well, will, will have a wildfire protection to be approved as well. They have access to drive, drive to. So they, um, they currently, their plan is for future access for that second one. Um, our, our bylaws require, or, or only allow one driveway onto the lower class road, which in this case is Lori Creek Way. Um, they are interested in, in applying for that, that drive through. They've included in, in this permit as, as future access, um, just some evaluation of, of traffic in the area needs to be done. And then that application.
Yeah, the interest of you think.
And decide, decide that, that it's gonna be traffic, so that we can hear a lot of that. Our, our, you guys said. So. There's no, there's no direct loss to, 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 that wants to, like, change, changing things. I just think that, you know, all of, all of access to highway, highway. But that's what the study has told us, whether or not we can. Cause the traffic is not such, such that we do that, then we have experts that are gonna say yes or not to that. That was another one that might come up all the time, saying, having, having access to. That's why I decided to do this, rather than having these orders. Because this way, this way, we can cover it. The whole section, section of the way.
When, when, uh, so, so there's an obviously.
That's part of the problem.
Is this, is, 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 as well as, as well as area to, to deal with the animal and that sort of thing, or do you have the, the gallery, gallery?
No, our plan is to move up there. Uh, and sell, or rent, or building uptown town.
We go, we go.
By, by a large margin. And our long term hopes is to have a new facility out there as casual allows, depending on cost, cost, and everything. It sounds like a basic, get a tiny barn as a stock, two horse work. In there, uh, rather than have to travel. Do you bring, do you bring people from, 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 from the land, from the geography, sometimes? We're trying to bring, bring your kids, yes and no, so that they don't, they don't go to no, no.
It's probably in order for, that's, that's the, or, or, or the rural area, rather than having, having horse, horse, cow, cow, down, down.
It's usually, yeah. What you do with. We originally tried to get a lot up there, but, but it's never, it's had a time we moved, it takes so long to find sign or something. So, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No, I, I think I haven't, haven't before.
Council, council?
They will all, all. Other than, uh, the, the volunteer dinner that, uh, council. Thank you, thank you volunteers again. In the, uh, was, was. Volunteers, you could do everything for the first. Thank you. Uh. April twenty sixth, uh, genie night. Uh, AGM. Benefits for the. I don't know, like, 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 resident, or whatever. I tried, I tried to somebody else. Honestly, we need, we need. But it's, it's more, more. We did, we did, uh, all over the last year, our star is still looking at, at more, 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 you know, uh. More, more, part of, part of the, uh, the better, the deal, you know, in our. One of our, one of our. But we're, we're not. Who we bring in, who we bring in, I, I. Insurance claim. This time, this time. Last week, uh, yeah, yeah. I guess. So going down and, uh, looking at conferences this year, some, some, emotional conference. Uh, we did, we sent them away, but, uh, Arbor and. And, uh, then afterwards, and, um, tours of the, tours of the original school area. So pretty hard, hardy day, angle there, so. Um, I'm confident in all, all workshops. Um, we had, had three ministers, uh, one for. Had to back out. You are, you are. Just get those. Lines, so hopefully, hopefully, this is getting better and better. But yeah, but yeah, we have great, we have Mr. Forrest, Mr. Si, Si, uh, to help, to help. Dictions, dictions, uh, and Mr. Mr. President of Management, Mr. Mr. of Municipal Affairs, Affairs. And we had, uh, we had, uh, what's her name, R M, R M, Russell, who had, who had resident person. Um, biggest turnout had, had from the government, government. It's all been, all been, you try to get government, government more involved in association. And this year, they participated, so. Hopefully next year, we'll have more people who we, who we can somehow get, somehow get everybody here. Uh, yeah, yeah, and, uh, there's a lot to get as a director of work. So good, so good. So, so, that's my most memorable.
I did forget, so get it, guy. I, uh, have been hard, hard with the, the airplane at the airport, you know, with the times I've driven by, by people. Sitting there like the airplane. Yeah. See, or, or. Yeah, yeah, see, see. Oh, yeah, yeah. Just playing, playing history, history, playing the battles, like, history, they're about to, they're probably up some down, back, back, or, or. And made the, the distance for, for military purposes. Lots of, I think, put into a, uh, something that can happen or, or EU and get it, get it. They didn't do the science on it, so then people, they have, they have. It's still, whatever, like, name, places, re, re history, or a lot, a lot, this, this. Yeah.
Anyway, I think, I think, Gary, Gary has a plan, but like, but like, it's a, a whole, a whole, yeah. Yes, yes, this is how, this is, this is, uh, uh. Beast research here, you know, you know, and Gary can put it on. Yeah, we, we, we went out to town today, so there's people, people hanging out over there, have a, have a lunch, sit, sitting. Like you said, you said, grab, grab, or something, or go there, what can I try? So we go for one, one of the, so, so, yeah, yeah. You come, you come on a landmark, that what you say, so, so. Yeah, yeah. Okay. Um, there's nothing else, so I will ask for more. Uh, I'm gonna be close, so there's all the hardware, service, and, 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 yeah. E, E dashes, which is, which is, which is, which is, lands, and, and, services, services, physical, we're using, we're using, the, the, our, 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 our.